Alrighty. It is ten oh one. I am legally prepared to start this meeting. Want to welcome everybody to the October twenty-fourth meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Dennison. And it is now our custom, we begin our meetings with invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, I'd ask that you stand with us at this time. Father, we're grateful for, again, for another opportunity to come before this group to discuss the business of the city that you have allowed us to call home. We thank you for that opportunity. Ask that your blessings would be upon this meeting. Father, the turmoil that's going on in the world today, we just ask that you would just be over it and grant peace to, to the world. And Father, we give you this praise and thank you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, again, thank y'all for being here with us this morning. The Planning Commission is a recommending body. So with the exception of cases that are site plans and plaques, all of our decisions or recommendations that will be sent to city council for final approval on their meeting.
November sixth.
November the sixth. So regardless of what the outcome of our meeting is today, I think we just have a zoning case on our agenda today is all we have. So that, that case will be sent to city council for final approval. So please make a note that if you want to make sure to attend that meeting on November the sixth, okay? Okay, um, on the public hearing, we're going to give you the opportunity to come to the lectern and speak either for or against. I would ask that you would give us your name and address for our, for the record. We impose a three-minute time limit on each speaker and we'll call and give you that opportunity whenever we get to the, to the, to the case. Alrighty, we're going to go to item three, which is our consent agenda. Have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Item four A.
Good morning. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and make a recommendation on a request for a conditional use permit for property legally described as being all of lot one and two, block seven of Stevens addition, in addition to the City of Dennison, according to the plat recorded in volume twenty-eight, page three sixty-two, deed records of Grayson County, Texas, also known as six oh four West Main Street, or I'm sorry, West Morton Street, G-CAD property ID number one four two one three nine, to allow for a restaurant with drive-through in the Neighborhood Services zoning district. Case number twenty twenty-three dash zero nine one CUP. At the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, staff brought this item before you and asked that you take no action. Um, when it was first presented to staff, um, one lot was the only lot that we were looking at to accommodate this use. However, through the review process, it was determined that both of the lots that you see highlighted here would need to be utilized in order to accommodate drive-through and stacking lanes that are required by ordinance. So this is the subject property. It is zoned, uh, Neighborhood Services. It's located at the corner of, uh, Myerick Avenue and West Morton Street. And this is an aerial view of that subject property. You might be familiar with this property. That building, that, uh, small building right there at the corner has been, uh, located on this property for several years. And this is the proposed layout of the additional space that was needed for the stacking lanes. So the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a restaurant with drive-through. They're proposing a drive-through only restaurant, as given the size of the existing structure is about a little less than six hundred square feet. The parking that you see is for employee parking only and the stacking lane, um, meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. In addition to the stacking lane, they are providing a little bit of an emergency exit, um, right there on the north end of the property. So the restaurant itself, the proposed, uh, name for the restaurant is the Hollywood Garden featuring Gracie's amazing southern cuisine. I'll let the applicant speak to the history of, um, the Hollywood Gardens, but, um, based on the project narrative that they were provided, this is a historic, uh, building and a historic restaurant where it was, it was utilized as a restaurant in the past. Um, they are proposing the hours of operation to be seven AM to ten thirty AM for food preparation. And the, um, actual hours that customers can come in or drive-through be ten thirty AM to seven thirty PM. They do meet all the requirements for the stacking lane, as I mentioned before. They're not proposing a whole lot of improvements to the site through the conditional use permit. There is, um, a little landscaped green space kind of in between, um, the north stacking lane and the south, south stacking lane. Um, and the driveway approaches have been approved by, uh, Public Works. Given the area, um, across the street and that this is a, a neighborhood zoning or a Neighborhood Services zoning area, a, a small restaurant does fit the needs of a Neighborhood Services zoning district and for that, staff is, uh, recommending approval of this, uh, request. And, um, oh, both properties are individually platted. If this case is, uh, met with an approval by city council, they'll move forward with a replat, um, in order to make those one cohesive property. I'm present for any questions you may have and the applicant is also here.
I noticed that there are no days given. Are they just wanted to be open to see how it goes?
Um, based on the project narrative, that was what I, I came up with, yes. But, um, the applicant may be able to speak to that. And if we need to make that more clear, um, we most definitely can.
Any questions, staff? Okay. Alright, is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward, sir?
First of all, good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
And other associated members of Dennison staff. I'm James White. I'm the owner of the property. I've owned it for quite some time. And I have some individuals now to work with me, uh, to create a rather unique southern cuisine type restaurant. Quality food.
Ms. White, I need to interrupt you. Could you give us an address for the record, please?
My personal address? Forty-two ten Crawford Street.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anything else I need to perform? Okay, I just want to make sure. Uh, mailing address thirteen seventy-seven Cross Timbers Lane. Okay. Again, uh, this is, this restaurant, I believe, is, is rather unique in that it's, it's on the north central part of Dennison. And quite frankly, uh, with the exception of Church's Chicken and, uh, Right Spot, there aren't any restaurants on that, uh, east-west corridor until you go approximately a mile and a half to two miles out to the west. And having an opportunity to stay in your neighborhood or at least, uh, stay on the course of a daily route from east to west, I think it would provide an opportunity for individuals to not only have a meal, you know, en route, or, or either pick up a family meal as well. That's what we plan to also offer there. Are there any specific questions that, that I may address with respect to, uh, any concerns? Because I, I'd love to do that, to take my three minutes to tell you.
Any questions? Robert? Go ahead, Robert.
I have a question, staff. Will there be a privacy fence required on the western boundary?
Yes, sir. So, uh, given that this is adjacent to residential zoning district, the applicant will have to follow, uh, the screening requirements that are detailed in the ordinance.
Yes.
And that's going to be on the south and the west?
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes. I was about to say that. There will be. Absolutely. No problem at all. Because I think it, I think privacy is important.
Do you have any plans to change structure at all?
Very minimal. Drive-through window installed on the rear of the building, the south side of the building. Now, they, with respect to glass and a few things that have been broken, all of that's going to be replaced immediately. Uh, if, if this, I'm planning to replace it anyway. But the drive-through will be on the s- south side of the building. And, uh, that, that is a minor change with respect to the, the rear exit area.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant?
This one is just curiosity. I've, I've seen that little building a lot for many years. And I'm wondering about the timeframe for the other restaurant, the prior one.
The what?
The prior restaurant in the building.
The timeframe? When was it in operation?
Whatever information, just.
From the late, uh, it's my understanding, uh, it was shortly before I was born, but, uh, from the late nineteen forties through the mid-sixties, the Monkley family had that. It was a, it was a mom and pop type restaurant. It was not only a restaurant where you could come in and sit, but they also had parties in the rear. There was a, as I, as I recall as a kid, there was a concrete block fence, uh, in the rear of the building. And there are some remnants of that left now. And they entertained, uh, by cooking and, and having parties in the rear of the building.
Nice. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Hang tight. We may have to have you address some other questions or issues. Alright, anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request, either for or against?
Good morning, members of the commission. I'm Robert King. I live at six one nine West Morton Street. I have, uh, made written protests to the commission, which have been received. So I'm just going to skim through this. Uh, concerns are that this is a residential block. It's going to increase traffic. As has been mentioned here, it's an east-west corridor. Well, I can tell you at this time of year, uh, about six, seven o'clock at night, when you're traveling west, that sun is in your eyes. That junction sees a number of accidents already. And we're going to increase traffic in that area if we put this restaurant there. It's a highly congested area of road. Um, and a lot of times, there is a lot of trouble. They're trying to control the speed in that area. So you're going to put an increased traffic flow in an area with high, with potentially high-speed traffic and at certain times congestion, school buses, also children playing on the neighborhood. I fear this would change the na- the nature of the block entirely. It's a, it's not the best block in the world, but it has a nice feel to it. And if you start increasing traffic, you start increasing noise, you increase litter, and this will cause a detriment to the block. We're also going to increase pollution in the area by increasing the traffic. And I have submitted with my protest, uh, a page from the American Lung Association detailing the effects of increased pollution and, uh, effects on residents of living in high pollution areas. Uh, and those areas are already main streets, things like that. So if you're increasing traffic in that area, you're also going to have a detrimental effect on the residents. Also feel this will cause an increase in wildlife and the wildlife will not be pleasant. Restaurants create, um, trash. Trash attracts rodents. Uh, we've already seen coyotes in the area. We've seen raccoons in the area. And we've seen foxes in the area. If you have a restaurant there, you're going to have trash. I came from a city of ten million people and I have no rabies in my country. Yet I was able to sit in the center of that ten million person city within a mile of the Houses of Parliament and watch foxes playing on the garage roofs. As I say, they're no concern to us. We don't have rabies. But if you start bringing wildlife into the area through trash, and they will pick up the smells, then that's a possible increase there. The area is already heavily populated with rodents. Uh, the reason being that there's been a lot of, uh, demolition and reconstruction in the area. Every time a house gets demolished in that area, the rodents all find ways into the houses. Miners appear and beam house. I had, I actually had to have my kitchen rebuilt because of the damage they did. And again, when construction goes, the rodents get disturbed again. They all go running. If you're going to increase trash in the area, you're also going to increase that rodent population. So those are my principal objections.
I've, I've got a kind of a question for you.
Yes, sir.
As far as, I, I don't know that I share your same concern as far as a significant increase in traffic. Being that this is a small mom and pop restaurant, not a McDonald's or a Starbucks or something like that, that yes, that would significantly increase traffic. You know, I, this, you know, being what it is, a small restaurant there, I don't see where you're just going to have a continuous long line of cars throughout the day for there. I know Mr. White would like to have that, but, but, uh, I, I just, I don't see where your, your claims of, of a lot of additional traffic. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't see that. I don't see the, that it's going to create a significant amount of pollution by having a, a, a large number of cars just, you know, sitting there, sitting there idling. And, and as far as the, the rodents and so forth, I mean, that's, you know, that's going to come. I don't know that they're, I mean, yes, they're around, but that the restaurant is going to, you know, significantly increase the, the amount of, of rodents. You're already on a, you know, what you claim is a busy street. And so, you know, that's generally going to keep them from, from coming, uh, you know, coming around that area.
Actually, sir, that doesn't stop them from coming around the area because a lot of the areas of the land due to the demolition in the area have been left wild. So that does not stop them coming around. As to actually crossing the road safely for the rodents, that may well be another matter. Uh, as to the concerns over the increase in traffic and increased pollution and cars idling, I might, I suggest to you if one car is idling where it doesn't need to be, it is increasing the pollution in the area. And if you bring one further car into the area, you are increasing traffic. So if the restaurant is, as I'm sure the proposer wishes a success, then naturally he is going to be bringing more traffic into the area.
Right. I don't, I don't disagree there'll be more traffic. Um, yeah, but I think it's a little bit, um, overblown as far as a significant increase in traffic.
Well, that, that all depends on the success of the restaurant, doesn't it, sir? You can have people diverting off the routes perhaps to visit that restaurant, people that wouldn't normally visit Morton Street. Or use that route to go home or to work or whatever it is they do. And that's where I fear the increase will be.
I have a couple of questions for staff. Let's talk about the, the homes that are directly to the west of the property. Are those lots zoned residential?
Yes, sir. They're zoned MF one.
Okay, so they're, they're zoned Monkley family, which allows for a single-family home to be built on. So.
Yes, sir.
So they're not single-family, it's not a single-family district. Am I safe to say that?
I would, well, zoning-wise, yes, but predominantly developed, no.
Now, I know that the house, the two houses to the south, Darryl Myerick, we, those were single-family zoned?
No, I, I, not that I'm aware of.
I built those too, so I think that's one thing. But I'm not as sure either.
Well, a single-family home is allowed in the MF one by right.
But I thought, I thought those two lots, I think, were, were single-family lots, but maybe they weren't.
Sure.
Uh, that was one of those cases where one of the lots got replatted into, to two of those. It was a mess. But, um, okay, so then this particular site is zoned Neighborhood Services, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so can you briefly just give us a rundown of what services could be built on this site without any kind of a CUP or actually having to come through the process?
Um, I don't have the use regulation chart in front of me, but your Neighborhood Services are, um, lesser, less intensive commercial uses. Those that are beneficial to the surrounding neighborhoods, um, small little pop-up grocery centers, um, small little restaurants, coffee shops, things like that. Um, so that they're available within walking distance rather than a large grocery store or of, something of that nature. And the idea behind Neighborhood Services is that whatever, um.
Would a convenience store with no gas be allowed in that, in that district?
I would have to look that up, Mr. Chairman.
Well, the reason for my question is this, that there are a significant number of allowed uses that could be built on this site without this process. So, uh, when you're looking at the change in pollution and generation of traffic, there's multiple uses that could be built there that would do that, that very thing, that we have no control over whatsoever. They're within the, the, it's within the zoning. They'll, they're allowed uses, so they would not have to come before us or council or anybody else to go in and build, build that project. Staff, correct me if I'm wrong. But hang on, hang on, hang on. What, you can have a seat. I'll, I'll give you a second to rebut, okay? So they're here today asking for a CUP. Okay, so let's, let me kind of explain that. That's a conditional use permit. Now, there's guidelines and what happens is in a CUP case is the city has control. Understand what I'm saying? So, Mr. White, if they don't become good neighbors and they're in violation of the CUP, then we can step in and say, uh-uh. You can't do that. You either have to abide by the rules or we pull the CUP, which would mean you can no longer operate the business. So this may be a little difficult. You might not want to believe it at this point, but we're actually better off with what we've got presented here today than a use that we have no control over that could come in there and, and create just as much traffic, just as much issues as this, this use is going to create, maybe even more so, depending on what that use is. If a convenience store were allowed, a convenience store could be open twenty-four hours a day. So you've got traffic all night long, you know, that's coming in and out of there. We got a business here that's closing at seven o'clock in the evening. So, you know, we're not going to have loud noises and stuff going on at night when people are trying to, to go to bed. So I, I think we need to, you need to consider, you know, what's being asked for, what kind of controls we have at the city level and what could be built if nobody has control of it. So I give you a chance to rebut. If you'd like to come back to the lectern.
The only comment I was about to make on what you said is, yes, I understand that you have those uses. The point I was about to make is, I understand what you've said to me, but this is a change of usage and that's what's in dispute. That's all.
I disagree. I disagree. It's not a change of uses because the building originally, as Mr. White told us, began as a restaurant that operated from the late forties to the mid-sixties. So it's already been a restaurant at some point in time in, in, in the history of, of, of its existence. So I really don't think that we could say, truthfully, it's a change of, of usage because it's not.
With great respect, sir, that was fifty years ago.
I understand that.
So for the last fifty years, it hasn't been a restaurant.
And there's laws I live by every day, sir, that were established two hundred years ago and I still go by them. So the fact that it, it was in existence as a restaurant with the residential uses because a lot of those houses were built before that building was. So it did exist and operate within a residential environment.
The only thing I would say, comment on that, sir, is two thousand years ago, they allowed stoning.
Excuse me, I didn't, I didn't understand what you said.
I said, the only comment I would make on that, sir, is two thousand years ago, they used to allow stoning. Does that mean we're going to allow stoning today?
Well, no, it doesn't, but you made a statement.
The point I'm making, sir.
Change in use and it was not a cha- it's not a change in use.
The point I was making, sir, is that use of it as a restaurant was fifty years ago and fifty years, for fifty years, the residents haven't had that usage.
Okay.
So that's, that's the only point I'm making.
But it wasn't, it hasn't been used as that, but it's not a change in the usage because that's what it was built as originally.
I, I get that. And as you pointed out, you abide by laws that were created two hundred years ago and I fully understand that, which is why I made the comment about two thousand years ago, stoning was allowed. Do we allow that today?
Spitting on sidewalk wasn't allowed and it's still on the books in the state of Texas. I understand that. But it's not the same animal.
So are, so are some very funny train, train laws, I believe.
So, you know, I think what we have here is, for lack of a better terminology, a lesser of evil for the citizens.
It depends whether you're a citizen or not and whether you're affected by it.
I am.
Do you live on Morton Street, sir?
I don't live on Morton, but I am a citizen of Dennison.
Okay.
Okay, and, and another thing too, I've, in my position here, sir, uh, I don't make decisions for a select few. I make decisions on what will benefit the entire city of Dennison. I'm representing every citizen in this town. And, and so I can't, unless it's just a really nuisance and it's a negative and it is going to create a lot of, of, of problems. But I can't take a piece of property that has a zoning, that's a commercial-based zoning and, and a use that is not going to be a nuisance and is, is not the worst that it could be and legitimately say, no, we, we, we can't have that.
I understand your position, sir.
And so, um, in our making decisions here today, we have to make decisions on what is the best land use and what is the impact on the citizens, what are the conveniences for the citizens. And we have to take all that into consideration when we make our decisions. And again, as I said earlier in the meeting, this is not the end of it. If you choose to go to council and plead your case with council.
Unfortunately, I'll be out of the country on that day, sir.
Then you can certainly do that and, and they do have the power to override us and, and change whatever decision we make here today. And I don't know what that decision's going to be. So, um, anyway.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you, sir. Alright, anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? No one? One last chance. Would you like to come speak, ma'am? Anybody else? Alright, if that be the case, I'm going to close the public hearing. We have, um, I have, uh, letters of support and opposition. They're, uh, similar, um, comments as to what our speaker has said here today. Uh, they're concerned about trash. They're concerned about smells. They're, you know, traffic is a concern. I don't think this use is really, um, has enough impact that it would require any kind of traffic study. I do think that it needs to be stressed that there is a CUP attached to this use so that if it does become an issue with, with odor, with trash, with litter, with noise, then the city can step in and require the owner to comply. I have some folks who are in support and, um, think that it would actually be an improvement and a convenience for the, for the, uh, for the area. So discussion, yes?
I have a couple of comments to make. Having lived in the main street area for about eighteen years altogether, I'm fully aware of what trash means and things like that because I was right on Main Street. I would much prefer to have a well-cared-for business where there's a, a person that is going to take care of his property and run a small business than to have a shop that required a big parking lot full of cars on a daily basis. So the words about, uh, the possibility of a convenience store, I think about some of the other possibilities that might be included in that. So my vision, because of what's new, I think of ACE. There probably wouldn't be another ACE. But I just think about the busyness of some of those businesses that would want to have longer hours than what we're proposed for here. And so I understand everything that you had to say about the increased things because it's, sometimes we don't like change. Change sometimes is good and once it's happened, sometimes we like it better than what happened before. But in this case, because it had been. But, in this case, because it had been a restaurant, and there are a lot of people who value the history of Denison and make remarks about what it had been there before, I know that there's gonna be, uh, an equal amount of pleasure coming along with this to see something reinstated that had been there before. I think that's about all I have to say, I, I'd re- much have somebody taking care of the property than have an abandoned building where you don't even know what's happening.
Another thing too, that I think needs to be recognized, is that the owner of this property is a resident of the city. So many times we get people coming in from out of town to develop properties, they don't live here, they don't have a stake in the community, and, and sometimes they create more problems for us, uh, than, than a resident of, of the city, uh, I think he'll be more inclined to maintain and keep the property, uh, in, in good shape than what, what if it were a private site.
I just meant, like to make a comment, cause I think we forget this, sometimes the, our planning group here, and the people on council too, are all people who care about Denison and want what's good for Denison, we're volunteers, we don't get paid for what we do, and so, I, I think that needs to be kept in mind, is, uh, we work with staff to make decisions, so we're volunteers here.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the conditional use permit for a restaurant with the drive-through for the property located at six-oh-four West Morton Street.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Pose, motion carries. Staff updates?
I believe my only staff update was that the, uh, proposed amendments that we brought before the commission for the mobile food units passed at council. Mary, do you wanna speak to the USDA stuff?
Uh, this Thursday and Friday are the USDA workshop number three, uh, Thursday is from five-thirty to seven, it will be on, um, proposed design guidelines for the residential areas surrounding downtown and some of the existing, the older neighborhoods, focusing on what we've been focusing on, um, and defining the different neighborhoods and the styles of architecture. That same, uh, workshop topic will be on Friday as well, in the past, we had been doing different ones, and I didn't feel like we were getting the momentum that we needed, so I asked that they, uh, do the same one both Thursday and Friday, and then, the first one in the morning on Friday is for, um, our, uh, service providers, so nonprofits, churches, um, any of the food, um, uh, banks or, that are offering food services, uh, we're trying to make sure that we are not duplicating services across the city and also extending into the counties, so, um, like the United Way is going, uh, has offered to participate, and we wanna make sure that we're trying to reach the groups that are needing assistance within the city, but making sure that we are not duplicating those efforts, so bringing all those service providers together, uh, that hasn't happened in the past, so we wanna find out what they're offering, how we can work together better, um, and maybe improve that impact throughout the city. So that one is not open to the public, but if you do have, um, for the public that's here, if you have connections, or, um, please spread the word, there are flyers out front, um, about it, and if you have a church that you participate in, we have reached out to all the churches and service providers that we can think of, um, but if you have information that you'd be willing to share, I would really appreciate it, we're really trying to, to figure out how we can help our residents in the best ways that we can, whether it's through, um, housing, repair programs, or whatever they may need, so we're just trying to get some information.
We have a tab for humanity, it's a bad...
Yep, absolutely, and we have, um, reached out to them as well. Thank you.
What time is the Friday morning?
Friday morning is at nine.
Nine to eleven.
Ten-thirty, I believe, and then twelve to one, or twelve to one-thirty.
And then, uh, Thursday is?
Five-thirty to seven, yep, so trying to offer that workshop different times of the day for more people to participate.
Any idea what kind of response you're getting, particularly the nonprofit one?
Yes, they've had, RSVPs went directly to Lizzie, uh, in B.C. Workshop, but she has had responses, Felicia, um, has made contact in person with a lot of people, and so she's had conversations, um, of interest, so, I hope it's good, but...
So good response, Felicia.
That's it? All right, well, I will, uh, entertain a motion. To adjourn. You already did it? Mr. Speaker, there's motion, Karen second, all in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned at ten-thirty-five AM.